All right, well, it is 5:30 according to my iPad, so let's call these order please. Those who are willing, they will be standing quick.
United States of America and to the Republic of which stands all nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry, turn your mics on. I forgot to do that. My apologies. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Which one was that?
Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Sorry. Any other discussion that you want to add or anything? No? All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Visitors.
Mary, last one.
Mary. And the little notes up there for you to read, but I can read it if you would like for the community concerns, public forums. Yeah, you're good. You're good, Mary.
Keep the personal attacks down.
You're good, Mary.
I'm just addressing the board, really to follow up from, I think it was February I came to and said, and I think PAS is missing the boat by, with volunteers that we're not welcoming, encouraging, and having volunteers. And so, anyway, there was some discussion on it, and then summer came and Swift came to town, and I was like, I wonder what this is all about. But it was going to be, I felt like the vibe was going to be on poverty and addressing poverty. So I attended those two meetings, and they, I guess, they weren't exactly as I expected, but yay for me. Out of it, the number one goal, they came up with three goals, a one-year, a two-year, and a three-year, and I'm not sure if any of you were at those meetings, but the number, uh, Mr. Enerson was. The number one goal was homework assistance in school and after school. That's what came out of that community meeting. And I thought, ooh, they are speaking my language. This sounds great. They formed a committee of, I think it was about six people, and I know that committee is probably working in that direction. Then Ms. Wellness reported to the board about test scores, and math was one of them that did stand out, and I thought, there we go, head in my direction again. Because I have a passion for helping with, really, math is probably one of the number one things. So, that being said, I am trying to help a student, not my own, that is in a Algebra II class, and the Chromebook is about this big. And I just, I think the Chromebook is a nice asset, but it is not a textbook. And when it comes to math, at my age, I really value being able to use a textbook and say, let's go back and look at the sample. This is what the sample looks like. If you're on that little Chromebook, oh, it's just not, it isn't what I would call a great tool to use when you're tutoring. So, anyway, that being said, the student did not have the Algebra II book, so I emailed, I'd like an Algebra II book. Then I made a couple of phone calls, I'd like an Algebra II book, and then it suggested I need teacher approval to get the Algebra II book. And I have checked them out before. Last year, I checked them out without incident. More than one book, more than one, it was Algebra II and maybe Algebra, anyway, I had more than one book last year. So then we got together with the teacher. I sent my husband into the teacher, because he's kind of a part of this. I said, you see if you can get the textbook. We need the approval from the teacher. I felt like we got, I was in the background. We got the approval from the teacher, and so we did all this. It took a number of days, and then I got the phone call, there are no textbooks. There's not a spare Algebra II textbook. So I thought, okay, take matters into your own hand. Just go on Amazon.com and get yourself a textbook. Of which I did, but probably too quickly, because I just matched up covers. I found one that had the same cover as the book I needed, and I ordered it, and it came, and I thought, great, I'm going to have my textbook, and it was Common Core, which is not the same textbook. It has the same, so it's a different edition. So I sent that one back, and I thought, really? I feel like the school should be doing this, not me. This is not even my own student that I'm trying to help, and we are down to eight weeks, and this student has a fair amount to do. And so, I am coming to you suggesting that we have a textbook shortage, and I don't know if, how we fix that. But I would like an Algebra II book. I think, it was mentioned, maybe we could get every textbook in the library, so that if there's another subject a parent wanted to help with or a volunteer, you could just go to the library and check it out. You wouldn't have to call Suzie, who, and then call this person to, it was, it's several phone calls to get, and I would love it if they were all in the library, one copy of everyone, and you could check it out for two weeks and get it back in. I would just be a repeat checker-outer, and if someone else needed it, then we'd need a plan B. But I don't think there's going to be a run, from my experience, on an Algebra II book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other?
No.
No? All right. Thank you, Mary. Moving on to number five, the consent agenda. Are there any items? 5.1, all the way down through and over, thank you for shutting the door down, to 5.10.1. Are there any items that you would like to hold? Any items? All right.
I'd like to just point out to the gifts to the district, thank you, from, to the Pipestone J.C.'s for their donation, Pipestone Area Friends of the Library made a very nice donation also, the Pipestone Elementary Booster Club, and the Pipestone County DFL for their contributions to various organizations. Really appreciate that.
Wonderful. Thank you to those. All right, so hearing none, no items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Which one? Jeff? Sorry. That's why it's a bad idea to have all the guys together.
I'm hearing you just fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion or any other thoughts? Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, 5.1, all the way through 5.10.1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, six, to one? Six to one. Number six, and thank you to all those, those people, the J.C.'s and the Friends of the Library and the Elementary Booster Club and the County DFL. All right, number six, administrative reports and information, 6.1.1, Jackie, review of the budget year-to-date.
Budget year-to-date, we're at 33 percent. I did a few budget transfers. I didn't do anything to adjust overall budget. Last year, we were at 29 percent. Looks good. Audit report should be presented in December. You'll see a budget publication that will go via the newspaper on Wednesday, which will have tentative numbers for the audit, because I still have a comment on the bottom that they're unaudited, because it's not finalized yet. It should be close. Other than that, if there's any questions?
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Jackie? No questions for Jackie. Thank you for that. All right, moving to 6.1.2. Mr. Strasser.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. A couple of things that I would like to mention tonight. First of all, it's always pretty cool when we have a state caliber team, so I want to give some recognition to our football team for accomplishing, making the second, making the championship game, and really pleased with community support and student following. So, pretty cool stuff there. We did, we did a virtual day on November 7th, and it was really interesting getting some feedback from our staff as we planned and then carried out that day. Many, many staff found that it was, it was more challenging than probably what we might expect in terms of carrying out and designing the curriculum and instruction for that day, and then doing the actual day, and then the follow-up afterwards. I heard from several teachers saying that it was, it was more difficult to do that than go through a normal day with students. And so that, so that was really interesting. Part on the back end of the day is, you know, how do we get assignments in, the time it takes to correct and go through and work through the attendance piece. So there were a lot of interesting dynamics, but I think it was a very good learning experience for our teachers to get them out of their comfort zone to deliver a day virtually. So overall, I was pretty pleased with it, but it was, it was interesting, the comments that, they were more surprised with what it took to prepare and actually carry out the day. There were a few tech glitches for some teachers, and, you know, every teacher's in a little different spot where, from a technology standpoint, so they, they had to work through some of those things. But overall, we were able to, to take attendance by having, having kids log into the means that they wanted them to, and they were able to deliver what they wanted, mostly through Google Classroom, but there were some other, other ways, and they were able to communicate through email. I know some teachers were able to talk on the phone with kids and so forth. So we were able to do all the things that we would want to do. It may not have always looked pretty during the day, but I think, like I said, it was a good learning experience to have to go through that.
What was the attendance that day? I mean, was it the percentage or?
Yeah, and it's really hard to gauge attendance. So I looked at it two ways. I had teachers send me an estimate of, of what they had. Some were very accurate and others were more. Yeah, I think it was 70 percent. But overall, when I tallied that, it was right in that 70, 75 percent of kids attended. So if you average all the teachers, and, and you have to take it into account, you know, one teacher has 125 kids and another teacher doesn't. So it's very, there's a lot of variables to that. When I looked at the high school, and we ran a report on the high school that just showed individual absences, so 99 of our 316 kids, so just over 30 percent, had one absence, at least one absence. And so I looked at that, and, and I know, since I had a kid on there, that, you know, they didn't, there was one class that they didn't, they didn't get to by 3:15. Doesn't mean they didn't do their work, but we set the cutoff as 3:15, we want to take attendance. And I did have several teachers say, well, yeah, by the next morning, I had 100 percent. So, just in, you know, the numbers are what they are, but overall, I was pretty pleased with where we were from an attendance standpoint.
So if the teachers mentioned that they found out it was way more, more difficult than they thought, did the kids say anything about it?
You know, I did hear a lot from kids regarding how they, how they felt about the day. I did have, you know, from the parent's side, parents say it was hard for, for their kids because a lot of it, it's unstructured time, and they're not used to having a full day of learning expected on them, and to sit down, and a lot of times, parents aren't home, and how do I, how do I go through and organize my day? So I think that was the challenge for probably a good number of students.
That's, that's what I would say. If I was not home with my kids, keeping my fifth grader on task, I mean, and he had a friend over, and they sat, and honestly, they, they couldn't believe how much, I mean, they literally worked the whole entire day from the time that, because they checked at 8:45 and it wasn't ready yet, so it was like nine o'clock, they started, and I let them take a little break for lunch, and, you know, eighth grader, you know, she kind of had some issues, and like, send an email, send an email. So I just think, you know, it's, if I wasn't there, some of the issues, you know, it is difficult, you know? And I don't know, I just kind of thought too, well, would it have been easier if, and I don't even know how you'd even be able to do this for sure, but like, if the teachers like livestreamed it, you know, like, they actually taught the lesson to the kids that they would have taught in class, instead of having to prep so much work online? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how that would work, and I guess I don't know how you would get them to, I'm sure you'd still have to have them answer some question or whatever for attendance and stuff, but I don't know, I just thought.
They really all just had their first experience of an online class, like they take college.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they are more work.
Yeah.
That was the feedback.
And a lot of it is, how do you get kids to understand the mentality that it's a day of school?
Right, right.
Because they stay home, and they want to play games, they want to go hang out with friends, they want to go to Sioux Falls, they want, and, and, you know, when you're talking fifth through 12th grade, so you have a lot of variables there with the way kids approach it, and, and we probably need to do a better job of, okay, this is what your day should look like when you're at home, and this is what I expect out of my classroom. And we tried to do, you know, a lesson prior to, to get teachers to kind of understand how they need to do it, but also to get kids in the thinking mode of, of doing that as well. So, yeah, if I were to look at it, doing it again, I would definitely want to do, get teachers a little more, try to prep kids better, try to communicate, hey, this is how you should handle your day, especially in my classroom, and when you should probably be done with things. Because I know, just from my standpoint, I had a student, my kid was done at noon and my other ones weren't. So, I mean, just how they approach the day, maybe eventually get it done.
Did you have many students that had internet issues or didn't have internet available or?
I didn't hear that. So I can't really say if we had concerns on that.
Okay.
All right. And then the other, other things, I took a look at our PSEO enrollment numbers, and I just wanted to share this information with you all. This, this fall, we have 20 students enrolled in post-secondary enrollment options. And out of those 20, 12 of them are seniors, eight are juniors. We have, of those 20, eight students are taking more than one course, so that could be anywhere from two to seven. We have one student who is essentially full-time PSEO, so that means we're taking what we would consider a full load, either six or seven courses. The most popular courses that they take are college keyboarding, composition, and government. And that's always been part of my frustration with, with PSEO is that we offer the composition and government at the, at the senior level. There are classes that some kids take that we can't, or that we, we don't offer, like a medical terminology, so I had a couple of students who take that as an example. And then I went back and I looked at, from the previous year, so last spring, just in that semester, we had 29 students who took PSEO courses, of which 14 were juniors. So I kind of just did a quick cross-reference of the names, and pretty consistent, so we had 12 seniors now, 14 juniors last year. And, yeah, so the numbers are consistent, a lot of the same types of courses that I've seen. And then I went back a little bit farther, when you get into 2012, 2013, 2014, we were consistently in the, in the 30s, and even approached 39, 40, I think that was 2014, in one of the semesters I looked at. So we are significantly down. And that's just one of the things that we've tried to be more diligent in communicating both the value and the challenge of students taking PSEO courses. So we want the student and the parent to know what they're getting into as they take post-secondary enrollment option courses, so. Questions about PSEO?
How many college-in-the-schools courses do we provide here?
We provide, ask me that, that number. It's close to, close to 10. We're strong in science, strong in language arts, and math.
Just for the board, PSEO is when you're taking the course at a college or through a college. The college-in-the-schools is where we teach the course through a college. Our teachers deliver that college credit here. So you kind of say, well, what's the difference? One is, is here with us, and the other is where they're going, so.
And we've slimmed down our concurrent enrollment courses here. Over the years, we used to teach in animal science, you know, as staff changes, we don't, we don't teach that this year. We used to have American history that was college-level. We don't teach that. So we are, like I said, we're good in science, math, and language arts in terms of a college track that is concurrent, and majority of those courses are with either the University of Minnesota or SNSU.
Maybe you could add the requirements to teach a college-in-the-schools course for our teachers?
Could I add that?
Yeah, what does that require?
Oh, yeah. Teachers need either a master's in the direct field, so, for example, I'll use Mr. Dulles. He teaches physics and an AP chemistry. So when, in order to do that, he has, I think he's got his master's in chemistry. The other stipulation is that you need 18 or more credits beyond an undergrad in a certain field. So he's achieved that in physics, so therefore, he can also teach physics. So those are the rules that they're looking at, and I know in the past, we've talked a little bit about some of the changes that are coming as part of the Higher Learning Commission, and our state kind of working through what's expected out of teachers in high school, being able to teach college-level courses. So we're pretty fortunate to have the teachers who can do that.
The university, yeah, the universities used to be more flexible with having a master's degree, and then they would give you credit for years of teaching, so if you taught biology for 15, 20 years, they would let you teach the college-in-the-schools course without some of those other, but now the change is, so that's where we're seeing some challenges with finding qualified teachers for some of those, so it's becoming a little bit more challenging, and we start losing these courses.
Are the students required to pass the AP test still to receive the college credit on the classes here, or is that different? No, they're not, because we, we essentially moved away from advanced placement courses, and the reason I mentioned AP Chem, we call it AP, because they can take that test, and every year, a couple of kids do, but that's the only one we really offer the AP test. Otherwise, you know, the big difference between AP and a concurrent enrollment course is, concurrent enrollment, it's like going to a campus, working through the course, taking tests along the way and the coursework, whereas with AP, you do all the coursework, and then you take one test one day, and that's what you get. So, and that's one of the reasons we kind of moved away from that. Other questions about PSEO?
I'm just surprised the junior number is so small, because it's such a large class, and I know there's a lot of smarty pants in there, and so I'm just kind of surprised by that. So it'll be interesting to see come second semester, you know, because I know they've already read, you know, Mara's already registered for whatever class. Yeah. So it'll be interesting to see if maybe they just kind of wanted to see how maybe some of the classes this semester were going to go, or maybe their parents said, I don't want you to do it until second semester, or whatever, too, but.
Yeah, I think we're starting to see that.
Yeah.
Where parents aren't as, oh, yeah, you can, you can go do that. And I, and I think kids are starting to understand when, when you take this PSEO course, it goes on your transcript.
Right, right.
And, and we've had kids fail and withdraw, and like, that goes with you. And, and I think they go in, oh, I'll be able to leave, and maybe look at some of those advantages that way, but then a lot of it's online learning, and it's not easy. So you have to be very disciplined as a student in order to do that. So I think, yeah, I think a lot of that is, people are starting to take a second look before diving into concurrent enrollment, or excuse me, PSEO. Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to mention, went to the MREA conference, and a lot of the emphasis was on college and career readiness. Learned a lot from the Onto College program, and that's John Baylor, and he talked a lot about ACT prep, and, and shared some insights about, you know, how they, how he's worked with schools to implement ACT prep. So that was really good to get, get some little insights there. One of the things that, that kind of stuck with me, you know, what, what do colleges really care about? And at the top of the list, it's grades, it's GPA, and it's the ACT. And he says little things like, you know, you recommend that students take the ACT up to four times. Of course, I text my daughter, and she did not reply kindly. You know, it's just, who wants to take the ACT four times? But, you know, it's things like that, that sometimes we don't think about, and what is the right way to really approach that aspect of preparing for college? And so we got some good insights there, and went to a few other sessions that, just, you know, looking at schools and career readiness, manufacturing, welding academies, and how other schools are doing it. So a lot of real, real good information came out of that, that conference.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Court? No other questions? Thank you. Skip in this one?
Yeah, Ms. Bartman had a family, her grandma, so she needed to be gone today.
Okay, and we'll move on to 6.1.4. Ms. Wellness.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, just a few highlights, and I'm, I have something later in the agenda as well. So just been working on preparing the World's Best Workforce summary from last school year, and planning ahead to this school year's World's Best Workforce Plan. I do have it on your guys' agenda for January for work sessions, so that we can get that down. Been spending quite a large amount of time in the district assessment coordinator role, reading and learning and taking training and figuring out what we need to do and where things are at, and if we have them or not, so that has taken a huge amount of time recently. Also, we've been collaborating with Deb Versteeck, the administrative team, and the district technology team, to create a draft of the district tech plan. And we're in the revision stage now, we're adding a few more people to the team, and hopefully this will be a final draft and ready for you at your December meeting. Deb and I have been meeting with the kindergarten through fourth-grade teams to gain an understanding of their iPad maintenance, like charging issues, a couple other things that we noticed, headphones, and then their app selection, and how we go about pushing apps out to iPads. So from that information, it was more just an information gathering. We didn't want to force something on them until we knew what they needed and what their situations were, but we'll take that information and make a recommendation. Probably not going to be ordering things for this school year, but it'll be for next school year. Just making sure that the iPads are charged in a manner that is safe, that is going to retain their battery life, and, and just overall maintenance of the iPads. And then Mr. Enerson and I have continued with our new teacher center meetings for our teacher induction program, and next week, we have one more where we can get further into, let's get going with this now. So that's what I have to report from that. My, I also attended the MREA conference, and my highlights were, I attended one session that I found very relative to my insights, which was called Relational Leadership. And Wendy also was able to attend that one, and the three words that I took away from that was making sure that my leadership is, has clarity, is flexible, and is, includes graciousness. So looking forward to making sure that I'm implementing that in my leadership role. The second highlight that I took away from the MREA conference was a project that I think would fit really well in our community, and it's called the Life Storybook Project, and Foston School District did this. In their community, they have a retirement center, and their 10th graders, I believe, did this project. And they were able to create hardcover books with pictures, and they went and interviewed individuals who were in this facility and created these books as, as part of a project, hitting a myriad of standards, building relationships with people that, you know, they probably wouldn't have a relationship with had they not done this project. I think we have a really unique situation in our community, having, you know, the Good Samaritan Center and a couple of the places where, where people live and aren't necessarily so watched. So I think something that I planted a seed in one of the English teachers' brains to say, hey, let's think about this for next school year. The school actually, Foston School applied for grants, so did the, the nursing home applied for grants as well, so it was all well-funded. So that's what I took away from that. Other than that, do you guys have any questions for me? Other than that, do you guys have any questions for me?
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mel. Appreciate that. Six point two, school board members. Six point two point one, negotiations committee.
Well, we have our agreement with the teachers on the agenda tonight. Through our negotiations, one of the one, one of the, there's two things that I think really stick out good. And one of them is the CIS. We included that in this contract so that we can help teachers get their credits, but then they guarantee us a certain amount of time. And if they leave early, then they have to repay for credits. And then the other thing that we did with this contract that we, over the years I've been on, we've done, and you can't do it all the time, but you need to occasionally, is any raises get added to the bases for all the steps so that we are staying on par with the rest of the schools. Tammy and Katie have any more?
And then we added the preschool. That was one big thing. The preschool teachers were added to the pay schedule.
Oh, yeah. Or formula, I should say. Yeah, yeah. They were on there, it's just so that we have a guideline to go by.
Right. Those are the big things though.
I think it went well, really.
I did.
No fights, no, no yelling. It was all, I mean, it really, really went well.
Three, three negotiation rookies here. Jeff did a pretty good job.
Good job, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff. Good job to all of you. Thank you for doing that. That's good news. The only thing I want to share is we did get a thank you. You know, we always get something from the board for people who lose a loved one and we receive them, Mel. So, thank you. And I'll let you come and pass it away. They've already seen it.
Okay.
So, thank you. All right. Moving on to number six point three, Mr. Enerson.
Enrollment is up a little bit this month, which is good. Last year, we kind of declined the first three months, but this year, we're kind of right back up almost to, I think, four less than what we started with at the beginning of the year. We had dropped down much lower last month, so good to see the enrollment is, is hanging in there. December 12th, we have our work session for the full board. ISG will be giving us their facility assessment, so we got that out. That'll be a board work session. We're going to do that.
Time is that? Not sure yet.
I don't recall if I had my time on that or.
I don't have it in my.
So I don't remember seeing a time.
I want to say it was, I shouldn't say anything because I'm not sure. Six thirty.
Okay.
Six thirty on December 12th. I've set aside two hours because that'll be pretty extensive. We'll go through all of our facilities. And I think that'll be, I think it was for something that significant, the whole board needed to hear that and not just the board, the facility and maintenance committee. It might get remanded back to the facility committee for work to go further ahead, but I think the initial needs to be heard by the whole board. So we'll do that on December 12th. Finance budget committee, I need to set a time, we need to meet in December and we can do that afterward. And also, I think policy, we were slated for this week.
Wednesday.
Are we still okay with that?
Yes, I just might have to leave a little early. Depending how many policies you have.
Five thirty.
Well.
I can't stay till midnight.
Deb's really getting into this policy stuff because I don't know how many she had for this one. I'm like, holy cow.
Deb.
Yeah, there's about eighteen and like, we could break this up into a couple of meetings, but we'll see what we want to get through and we did, you know, once we got it, so.
Because we're doing five, right? That's a five.
Five thirty.
Oh, five thirty.
Yeah, that one. Five thirty to seven is what we set for Wednesday. And, yeah, and then in front of you, you have a ballot for the service co-op, the board members need to vote on that. So if you could do that and turn that into Deb here at the end of the night, we'll take care of that. And I've also got an MREA ballot for some of you who need to vote, if we could take care of those things. Other than that, so I think the rest will be in our new business, our old business, so.
All right.
That's all I got.
Any questions for the superintendent? Any other questions? No?
I had a couple.
Yes.
Comments, I guess, or recognition I'd like to share. Should have done it before, but.
Okay.
Mr. Strasser put on ninth grade commitment to graduation. Thought it was an excellent experience for the kids, so wanted to share that with everyone.
You did.
Also, Ms. Wellnitz, for, I'd say tremendous improvement of the staff development meeting so far. It's been very bad, bad in meetings I've gone to, so. Also, the school lunch program for the delicious Thanksgiving turkey meal. I don't know if they ever get a whole lot of recognition, but my mom works there, so I know a lot of the work goes into it. They were up pretty early, I know, getting turkeys ready. And then also, just a thank you to all the voters that did show up for operating lobby. So it shows that one vote, head count.
Two votes, yeah. One, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Irvin. That's great. Thank you very much. Thanks for speaking for all of us. That's awesome. All right, well, let's move on to number seven, old business, seven point one. And seven point two and seven point three, do I have a motion to accept all those, the second reading of the teacher seniority list, second reading of the parent professional seniority list, and the second reading of the secretary's custodians tech assistant and AP seniority list?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Weest, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert. Any other discussion on those? Any discussion on those? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting some one, seven two, seven three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven point four, school board, student's school board application.
After our last meeting, we, you had a few suggestions, so I went through and kind of put together a packet with the other required information besides the four questions. We also have our expectations with the student signature and the parent approval to be on the, to be a part of the school board. And then we also asked for a letter of reference from a faculty or staff member. So those were all of those pieces and we have the role of the school board. So if you had a chance to look that over, if that looks good, I think that we can move forward with, this will be our application process for student school board members.
That looks great.
I thought it looked.
Yep.
Thanks for the input. Hopefully.
Thank you for your.
See where things, we had some interest, hopefully we'll still have some interest and I think we'll try to get that going here in December and maybe hopefully by January, if there is, we'll have someone, some students here.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Should, should you be approaching the 10th graders as well so that you get that bug in now so that by fall, we can bring one of them in?
Yeah, we probably should figure out how, yeah, how that, how that's all going to work because, you know, for them to, for them to start, I don't know, you know what I mean? Because they're not going to maybe hear about it in the summertime.
Right. So I'd say we get it going after the first of the year because your senior is going to be off the first of July.
Right, yeah.
So that between the first of the year and the end of the year, you can get your applications in and we can probably get one picked out to have them seek in August.
So will their be, their term on here be the school year, not like ours, from January to January?
I would say it'd be the, I'd say it'd be the school year, yeah. I don't know, when do you do, like, Mr. Strasser, when do you do, like, student council and some of those other, do you do those in the spring for the following year?
Usually, we do them in the fall.
In the fall for that year?
Yeah. We haven't, we've tried to do some in the spring, but it's been more effective in the fall. We'll see, Ms. Willamur, might want to do something different this year.
Okay. Well, we'll work on getting the word out and see how that goes and we'll do that.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments or questions on that, on the student school board application? Good? All right, let's move on to number eight, new business, eight point one, Steve Beekman. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, report on Pipestone Area Coalition. Come on up, sir.
Actually, I do have one extra then, so. Yes, I do have one extra for you, so.
Okay.
Print it up a few.
Okay. Thank you.
And sorry for the little yellow mark on there. My printer doesn't want to do printer things sometimes, so sorry about that, so. Yeah, thank you guys so much for having me talk here today. My name is Steve Beekman. I just wanted to give you guys a little update on the planning and implementation grant and a little bit about the Pipestone Area Coalition, kind of what we're doing, everything like that too. So, a little bit about this, well, first off, I want to talk a little bit about school and the community support. So I want to give a good shout out to Kevin and Cory for all the support that you guys have done with this grant and with this program. They've been a huge help with this entire program. Cory, whenever I go and talk to him about stuff, he doesn't say, Steve, that's a terrible idea. He's always supportive and offers extremely good inputs on everything too. And Kevin has been a huge support at coalition meetings, being active with it too, so both of them, thank you very much. And to the school staff too, they've been absolutely tremendous with the program, being active with it too. So just a huge thank you to Pipestone for really supporting it here too, so. So a little bit about what the grant is. So one year ago, Pipestone received a five-year million dollar grant to reduce underage alcohol use in the Pipestone Area School District. So this grant was awarded from the Minnesota Department of Human Services Alcohol and Drug Abuse Division, which I always screw up saying that all the time, but, so the fiscal host for this one is Southwest Health and Human Services, where I'm actually employed with. And we're partnering to reduce underage alcohol use within the Pipestone Area School District. So how this was received is, is based on the 2013 Minnesota Student Survey data on thirty-day alcohol use rate, higher than state average, but more importantly, a lot of the community support that was from it here. So members of the community, school, others wrote in letters of support saying, this is absolutely something great, this is something we want to see in the community. And that was a huge way of getting this grant. So there was other opportunities where this could have gone to, but based on community support, that's what got it to happen here. So very thankful for that too. And goes to show that the community does support a lot of good things happening here, so. Other communities that received this grant, kind of around the state here, Grand Rapids, Wells, Alexandria, eight other communities here too with it. This is actually the third cohort of this, so this has been running for about fifteen years now, they've been doing this here. And we're successful in this too. It actually opens up a lot of other potential for funding through drug-free communities grants, which is a federal funded grant. So it's five years, think roughly two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the federal government to reduce underage alcohol use, substance use, things like that with it too. And about a third of the communities that have been working with this grant in the past have gotten these drug-free communities grants. So if we're successful with this, with the coalition and with the school, there is a potential for even more funding in the future. And if we are successful with that too, they actually can get it extended. So there's potential for a million and a half dollars in fifteen years in Pipestone here if we're successful in this. So, which is pretty awesome. That does not happen very often where it comes around in, so. So a little bit about why we focus on alcohol prevention. Really, this grant is written for reducing underage alcohol use mainly because of a few reasons here. It's the most commonly used substance by our students by a wide margin, easily with it too. Followed by tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drug use then. Alcohol is pretty easily accessed by youth kind of nowadays and throughout the community with it too. We actually did a survey and even looking at past surveys with it too. From this last survey, forty-three percent of the high school students that said that they drank in the last year. The most common ways that they got it was from someone twenty-one or older buying it for them, parents with their permission, and then parents' parties, celebrations, in that order too. So kind of those most common ways that they received it then too. So it's pretty easily accessed by them. And also another reason why too, we prevent, by preventing underage alcohol use, we can prevent future substance use and future issues with alcohol dependency, various things like that too. So youth who start drinking at age fifteen years, years, years older or years younger there, are six times more likely to develop alcohol dependency or abuse later in life than those who begin drinking at or age twenty-one and older. So if we can get them to stop drinking, you know, before they turn twenty-one or anything like that, the potential for them to have less of these issues is so much greater with it too. So that's one of the main reasons why we focus on this grant, is we can, the longer we can prevent it, the better off they will be here for the future and future success. That goes to say with a lot of students with it too. So students who are kind of moving back to the community and doing a lot of these things too, if we're able to help that, it helps our community long-term too, so that I don't have to worry about alcohol dependency issues, substance use issues, things like that too. Also offers huge potential for positive change in our community. Not every day that you get a million dollars in your community for positive things like this, guys. Like this is a pretty neat opportunity that we have here, so. So here's a little bit about how we actually prevent underage alcohol use. We use a lot of the positive community norms or social norms messaging. And I think Kevin talked a little bit about that when, went to one of the trainings in the summer here. So what that is, is it's the social norming saying that most of our students are actually making these positive, awesome choices. And how it goes about doing is that students, adults, everyone just wants to know what's in the majority. So if the majority of students are not drinking alcohol, that's typically where you want to be in. You want to be with that select group with it too. So we use these messages saying, most of our students aren't drinking, most of us are doing these positive things like that too. So in turn, it changes those individual behaviors with it too, so they want to be more into the majority crowd with it too. Also, we do increasing community awareness of the issue. So if this thing is left unchanged, you know, this is going to continue to exist. You hear a lot of, this is the way it's been for the last whatever years, it's always like that. If we don't change it now, it's always going to be like that. So this is when we start facilitating those conversations and start talking about these changes that we can make here. And also doing trainings with school staff, with community members too. So we're, we offering a lot of opportunities for training, for, or prevention training for members of the community. So we've been able to do a lot of these things, bring back some of the knowledge, so it's sustainable for you guys well past the grant years here. Also get to work with law enforcement to help them out with like compliance checks, social post ordinances, policy changes, things like that too. So it's very comprehensive, get to do a little bit more of that. Also implementing curriculum in the school here. So kind of one of the things that the school is able to do is sign on for this, is they get to pick a prevention curriculum through sixth, seventh, eighth, and then a high school, where they get to implement this all throughout the grant years of that too, which is great because this is something that they can say, this is what we want to teach our students. And it's all evidence-based, peer-reviewed, and the grant pays for it and pays for the school to get trained in it as well. So that's pretty great. Also offers up funding for coalition-directed activities. So coalition is the community members who have an input and say that we want to be a part of this and we want to make positive changes in our community. So they offer up funding for coalition to do things, you know, like provide speakers, like provide different opportunities for youth, do things like that too. It's all community-driven that way too. Also offers funding for the STARS program. If you guys are familiar with STARS, students taking a rec stand, it gives them funding too so that the kids can actually decide, hey, this is what we're seeing in our community, we want to make these changes. Completely kid-led, I don't have any good ideas, they all have the best ideas, so that's why it's all kid-led, so. And also other things too, it, it is a very comprehensive program, so that's just kind of scratching the surface of it. These are some of the examples of some of these positive community norms messaging, like. like the wall out there, too. Unfortunately, it's kind of getting scraped off a little bit, too, but that's a message of the Positive Community Norms Messaging billboard that we had on South on Twenty-Three. Some of the pennants that we handed out at the home football game here, too. Some of these are all examples of these Positive Community Norms messaging. So, kind of examples of the difference between the two of Positive Community Norms and Other Messaging. This is actually a billboard that was put up outside somebody's community in Montana and compared to kind of a different Positive Community Norms message with it, too. So, you'll see that all the messages that we do fall in line with the ones on the right that are inclusive, positive, you know, see people smiling, happy, things like that, too. We're never going to do anything that's going to be shaming, blaming, or scare tactics, so we're not going to try and scare the health into people like this other one is here. We're always trying to incorporate the positive things. Always like to think of, if I was going to drive into Pipestone as, you know, someone from out of town or anything like that, what would I rather see? A billboard like that on the right or a billboard that says, you know, "Math is prominent here," something like that. Always want to think of how we are, you know, promoting our kids and our community that So, I really wanted to get in a fill of the STARS students because that's actually been one of my favorite things about this program so far. I came from working at Behavior Health in Sioux Falls, where I worked exclusively with adults. So, I never really got into it saying, you know, like, ever had too much experience working with kids, but this has actually been one of my favorite parts about this is because our kids are just awesome. They're so respectful, so kind, and they just give you, like, a whole ton of different energy when you're working with them, too. We actually brought ten juniors and seniors down to the elementary schools last month as a part of Red Ribbon Week, and we just had them go into the schools, have lunch with the elementary students, talk a little bit about STARS and about Red Ribbon Week. That was amazing. The kids down there just loved it, first off, like, seeing all these younger or these older kids come in here, and it was just so exciting to see that our older kids were huge role models in there. Thought that was just absolutely great, too. And when we first kind of started planning with this, I thought the older kids would be kind of so-so on it, and they'd have to kick and scream down to get them down there, but, oh, they loved it. All of them really wanted to do it, and this is something that they wanted to do for the future, so I thought that was really great. Also involved in hand out cookies at Red Ribbon Week, just kind of a promotion of Red Ribbon Week, and chunk or treat, so got a lot of our kids involved in that, too. Also involved in doing stuff at the county fair. Kids were able to help out with that, too, hand out some of the promotional messages, too. Also, we did a community service project last spring, and that was probably the most interesting thing with it, too, because a few of them worked with some of the power tools and rakes and stuff like that. Got a little scary at times, like Justin Poyman and his brother were climbing up on the tree, and I wasn't too sure about that at first, but everything was safe and fine there, so. But, yeah, it was really great to see that, just for our kids being active and wanting to be involved in the community. So, I just wanted to share that that was something really cool that we've been doing with that, too. Also wanted to give you guys a little bit of information on the survey that we took in February from the 2017 PCN Student Survey. I haven't had an opportunity to share some of that information with all of you or anything, so I thought this would be a good chance to do with it. A little background on this survey. This survey was created by Dr. Jeff Lincolnbach and his team over at the Montana Institute. And we get to use this survey as kind of a baseline to get input from our students on substance use, alcohol, other things like that, too, to get good baseline data that we can use throughout this grant. And this is where we get all of our messaging from with it, too. So, when we spoke with the school about how we can kind of administrate this with the kids, we decided with our, with our literary teachers, with our English teachers, that they were able to do this in classroom. And we were able to get sixth through twelfth grade students, so four-hundred-and-seventy students with it, too, to take this survey. We did have to take out about nine percent of the students. When we filtered through this, we take out inconsistent answers, you know, if all kids are putting C on there, trying to make shapes in there, or somebody who's been doing all these drugs in the book and everything like that, too. So, they hire out people from Michigan State who are actual professionals at looking at data to go and weed through this, too. So, some of the data we found with it, too, is most of our students, ninety-one percent of them, don't drink alcohol a typical month. It's absolutely fantastic. That's really, really cool stuff to hear with it, too. Most of our students, sixty-one percent of them, think most others are drinking alcohol monthly or more often. And that's where we kind of get into some of these Positive Community Norms, Social Norms messaging. So, most of our students walking around the school are thinking most are doing it monthly or more often, which is a concern. Ninety-one percent actually are not. Most of our students have never used cigarettes. Most of our students, large majority of our students, think most others have. The most interesting one we found from this survey was sixty-seven percent of our students think most adults in this, in our community, smoke cigarettes monthly or more often. I don't know how this happens with it, too, but most of our students are thinking most of our adults are smoking regularly. And that, I don't understand how it comes from, but I kind of get the feeling about, kids are seeing stuff. They're seeing stuff in the community. They're seeing people are smoking, doing whatever, anything like that, too. But in this, I always find the message of, "Our kids are looking at us. They're watching us doing some of these things, too." So, if this is kind of how they're seeing our community, it's something we're hopefully going to be able to change with this program, then, so. There's also a whole lot of other data with it, too, but I just wanted to share some of the highlights with it, too. But large majority of the questions we get at this is, you know, "Most of the kids lie on this survey. How, you know, how can you tell them the truth?" So, Professor, or Dr. Lincolnbach and Professor, I can't remember his name, from Michigan State, put together this data from all the communities that took this survey and are in this grant cohort, and roughly, you know, sixty-five-hundred kids or whatever with it, too, and kind of showed the answers that they had with it of, "How often do you think most students in the school use alcohol?" You'll see that it's pretty inconsistent. It's got some rises and valleys, and, you know, that's kind of what you would expect to see on a question like that with it, too. If you go over to the next graph with it, too, this shows that they're all kind of falling right in line with it, too, which kind of goes to show that our students are consistently answering these questions. And also goes to show is, if students were lying on the survey, did they all get, sixty-five-hundred kids get together and figure out, "We're going to lie together like this, all together"? So, these communities stretch from across to Pipestone to International Falls. So, this really goes to show that when people kind of question some of the data or the validity of this, too, shows that our students are honest on this, too, or they're, you know, being as honest as they possibly can with it. So, that's kind of good ways that they show consistencies in the data, then. Also, a little bit of the hope and concern that we have with it, too. You know, it's a great hope that most of our students are making these positive, awesome choices. There's still concern that, yes, there's students who are using alcohol, who are smoking cigarettes and doing some of these negative things with it, too, but that's something what our hope is, that we can change that, we can make positive changes in here. You know, if youth who perceive that most students drink monthly or more often are eight-point-seven times more likely to drink than students who think they aren't drinking. So, the students that are thinking most others are drinking, you know, are eight times more likely to be doing that. So, that's why we want to change that misperception and really want to say that most of our kids are making these positive, awesome choices, so we can change that, then. Even a few next steps that we're working on as a coalition, as a group here, continuing to promote some of the positive messages throughout the community, throughout the school here, continue to build up our coalition, get it involved in a few more things, and always building membership, too. So, if you guys are interested in seeing what this is all about or stopping in a few more meetings, too, I contact information's on that, too, or we meet every second Wednesday here at the school at three o'clock. Also, we're working on a parent survey coming up here in the spring, which will be put out to all parents of the sixth through twelfth grade students, getting their input on some of their student behaviors, setting rules and expectations with their students on things like that, too. And a cool thing from that, too, is the coalition can actually donate funds for every parent that takes this survey towards organization, youth-driven organizations in this community, up to five thousand dollars. So, what our hope with that is, too, we can get a lot of parents to take this survey, so we can just give away more money to the community. We certainly, you know, don't need to be keeping that for the grant, I guess, so. Also, continuing to do sustainability past the grant funding. You know, it's great to have a million dollars here in the community, but we got to make sure that it's going to last longer than the five years with it, too. Pipestone has done an awesome job, the school's done an awesome job at, you know, promoting the program and supporting it, too, but we got to make sure that this is going to be something sustainable well past the funding, then. Does anyone have any questions about the program or a little bit more about the stuff that we've been doing or data or anything like that?
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to eight-point-two approved summary of 2016-17 World's Best Workforce Report. So, I will not belabor too long. Please know that this is a report of last year's World's Best Workforce and last year's test scores and everything that happened last year. So, it's been interesting to go back and figure out last year. But you will find that, just start on page one, we have to give the web address that we housed on, that we're reviewing it at a public board meeting, which is tonight. Our district advisory committee consisted last year of the following people that are listed. You can see on your packet or on the screen. I'm hoping for the future to have a few more people, community, and grade levels represented. Now, getting to the meat of our goals and our results. Don't be shocked, a lot of our boxes are marked as goal not met, but those are areas to work on, and we will, and we are. When we look at the first, our first goal, all students ready for school, a lot of this is still in progress. Like, our goal was the Pipestone Preschool Program will work with community-based programs and Head Start program to encourage standardized curriculum to match what is needed for kindergarten. That's a multi-year goal, so I can mark that as goal in progress. Our preschool screening, that goal was met, to determine school readiness and interventions needed. This is utilized during our preschool screening and works very well. It's a good goal to have. The school will identify families new to the district and communicate with parents and supports that the district provides. This is a work in progress, so it's still a goal in progress. Third grade, all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy. This is, you know, the huge, I think, most important part of the World's Best Workforce. We are not meeting this goal. When we look at kindergarten, kindergarten first grade and second grade don't have MCA tests. It starts in third grade. That's your first, like, here you go, y'all, be ready. But we do have our FAST tests. We give the early reading test in kindergarten and first grade, and first grade also adds in CBM reading, which is another more comprehensive test that is included in the FAST suite. So, they're getting from forty-four percent in kindergarten of reading at or above grade level to second grade being at sixty-two percent. And then third grade, their MCA proficiency went down to fifty-two percent. And then their spring CBM reading was sixty percent were at or above grade level. So, we have work to do. We, you know, as you all know, are implementing a new reading series. We have Reading Core. We have quite a few things to work on making this goal to hopefully be marked as met.
What is the goal as a percentage?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent, reading well by third grade. Ms. Barton, myself, and three or four elementary leadership team members are attending a reading well by third grade workshop that is being put on next week. So, we're hoping to come with some good tools to really, you know, focus on where we're going.
Can I, maybe something here also to think about, you know, what is reading? I mean, reading it on the page and what, you have to understand, these scores come from standards. Someone at the state, they set, "What is third grade proficiency? What does that look like?" And so, there's a lot of complexities with our standards on what does it mean to be reading at third grade. I don't want anybody to think that kids can't read, because I think our kids can read. Some read faster, some read slower, some can read, you know, with better comprehension than others. We've always been that way, but this is about specific things, and this is why it's so important that our, that we deliver the standards, we understand the standards, that they're implemented at each grade level appropriately. And if I go back to the first goal of school readiness, if we have them ready, the research shows that if they're ready for kindergarten, they have a much better chance of being able to read well by third grade. So, I don't want you to be alarmed and think only half our kids can read, because they can all read. It's just reading at this level and this level of literacy is a little bit more. So, I don't want anybody to go, I don't want anybody writing a paper that none of our kids can read.
No, it's not that they cannot read, it's just...
Not that you would do that.
...because, you know, when Minnesota adopted the 2010 ELA standards, English Language Arts Standards, that was K-12. And essentially, they adopted Common Core reading standards, but they could take fifteen percent and make it Minnesota's. So, they worked on a few areas like speaking viewing and listening. They really added to that because that's lacking in the Common Core. But when you look at the previous standards to the current standards, it's like every grade level raised. So, what you needed then to know in second grade, you now need to know that in first grade, and so on and so forth. And so, it's helping our staff understand, and just like Mr. Anderson said, making sure the standards are aligned, being taught effectively and well.
The way the test, like the, like you said, they took the MCA the first time in third grade. So, are those tests, I mean, are kids shown how those tests work prior to taking the test? Okay. I mean, just so you're not coming into it...
Oh, you're not coming into it, right.
What are we, you know, I mean, how does this work?
Exactly. No, staff, so this school year, I don't know what happened last school year with that, but this school year, students will be walked through what the tests are. We used to have something called the OPA test that kind of got the kids in, and they could mess around and test it out, plus see how they would do. So, that's, those are areas that we can work on. Our kids also have been using computers for FAST testing, so they all take the A reading test in third grade. We have them doing it in second grade as well, so they can go in and understand, you know, what buttons to push and how it works. And they're pretty similar on scrolling and things like that to read. But our tests also, MCA tests allow you to go in and maybe order a group of events. You have to click and drag, so some skills that they do have to learn. Most definitely. When we look at closing the achievement gaps, this is an area that we do need to work on. When we look at our gap of our Hispanic students in reading and math, our special ed students also in reading and math, and then our free and reduced-priced lunch students in reading and math. There is one error. Thank you, Jackie, for reading now this. My other sets of eyeballs didn't catch this, but Jackie did. I'm going to bring my number stuff to Jackie. So, the math should read, the free and reduced-priced lunch students' math proficiency dropped from thirty-seven-point-four percent to thirty-two-point-three percent in 2017. All of this data is public. You can go to the Minnesota Report Card, and you can type in Pipestone Area School District. You can click and put, I click and put October one because that's what all of our data is based on, is the October one enrollment. And then you can click any student group that you want, so that one is actually the free and reduced-priced lunch, and it'll tell you what percentage those students who are flagged as free and reduced, where they're at. Same with the special ed and same with our Hispanic students. Working more, you know, toward the future, helping all staff understand... Working more, you know, toward the future, helping all staff understand what it means to be an EL teacher, because we can't just have A teacher be our EL teacher, that's what's gonna close this gap, as well as making sure our students are being taught the standards. Our special ed students, same way there, you know, really looking at where our students are at, and what we can do for all students that are gonna help a handful as well. Then we get into a career in college ready, our 2D, we did meet that goal, we have thirteen courses offered. Last year, we had thirteen courses offered, we sent, send students to the career in college fairs each year, they receive guidance, so that goal was met. Continue to work toward our all students graduating, our ninety percent graduation rate, if we look at the class of 2016 and graduating in 2016, we were technically at ninety percent. But I have to put the point, so it's been nine point nine, we had seventy-one percent, and then it shows you the continuing and the dropped out, so that goal was also met. The other area is identified needs based on data. Last year, our real focus was on school readiness upon the FAST early reading, reading well by third grade needs based upon that FAST test, alignment of the Minnesota English Language Arts Standards, and reading instructional improvements based upon the MCA assessment, results of a district-wide fifty point eight percent proficiency, alignment of the Minnesota math standards and math instructional improvements based upon the MCA results of a district-wide forty-seven point five percent proficiency, alignment of the Minnesota science standards and science instruction improvements based upon the MCA III assessment results of district-wide forty-seven point six proficiency, reduction of the achievement gaps in reading and math for free and reduced price lunch, special ed, and Hispanic students based upon FAST assessments and MCA III assessments, and increase the district's ACT composite score to ensure students are career and college ready. So those are some needs. The systems and supports that we have in our schools, we have them chunked by elementary, middle, and high school. We have a variety of technology, we have, like I said, in the elementary, we have Title One and Reading Core, we have help during recess and after school for students to catch up. We also have targeted services during the summer, otherwise known as summer school. Our middle school, some high points, you know, the middle school staff use FAST tests as well. Last year, we had a full-time ESL teacher, which was really helpful, not gonna be able to put that in next year's summary, but supports at the high school, you know, having that post-secondary transition plan, helping kids with their multiple pathways of whether they're going to that advanced coursework, connection with Minnesota West, making sure that the students have a good guidance program, some test prep, and other opportunities. And then, when we get down to our teachers and principals...
Hold for one second.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I add here too on the supports that you're seeing? I think one of the things that we're doing, we actually are trying to pare down, we've got so much that, how do you...
Can you do it all well?
I think that's where we're, I think as an admin team, we're really looking at, what are we doing, why are we doing it, and how's it helping us? And this is where we begin to start aligning better than what we've done. I think we've tried to rely on all these things to, and it hasn't worked, our scores show that it hasn't worked, so that's, actually, we reduce things off this list.
I've been deleting.
Are we doing this, are we doing, why are we, let's get rid of this, yeah, so...
No, we've been having really good discussions about, you know, what's the evidence to show that that particular program is working? You know, we're paying a lot for one particular program, what's the evidence for it, is, could we do, could we bring in something else, or could we do something else with that funding to ensure where we're at? So asking lots of questions, which, you know, isn't always easy, but it's necessary.
I know Tony at one time, and I don't remember if this was this year, or if it was last year, you know how we have Reading Core down in elementary, I know, and maybe you mentioned it, I don't remember who brought it up, but that there, you know, might be grant money out there for Math Core, I mean, do you find that that might be beneficial to help down there, or not? I don't really know how it's going, but...
That may be beneficial for more, like, middle school.
Okay.
On up, but as we're understanding where these students are at, and what skills that they need help on, and then going about applying for that grant. I don't believe that's something that can happen in the middle of the school year, but we can start getting it going for next school year.
And like, stuff throughout this summer, you know, like, do you, I mean, is there something that might help our EL population, where we can just specifically maybe try and hire somebody to help catch them up, or help them keep up, you know, so that, so that, you know, yeah.
They don't regress so far from where they're already at, and then with...
Right, right, you know, I don't, I mean, they're, I don't know if they're incorporated into the summer program as well, but just maybe a program that specifically, since we have such a large population, and we don't really have, I mean, we're doing the best that we can with what we have, but that might help us, you know? Yeah, I mean, just, just to kinda, until we can get somebody maybe full-time, or get two, you know, full-time licensed people, you know, I don't know, I'm just, just trying to think, you know, if those might be some things that just in the short run might, might help us, like, catch up a little bit, just, just thinking, I don't know.
I think that's wonderful.
I don't know, just a thought.
Keep thinking like that.
That might have stretched my...
You're giving me fuel, and that's, that's very helpful. If we go to our teachers and principals, last year, it was a really huge focus on unpacking the ELA standards district-wide and aligning instruction with those standards, K-12, they had support through the curriculum resources through Southwest-West Central, they had weekly PLC time to focus on standards alignment, they implemented the teacher leadership teams that supported district standards implementation, elementary principal and superintendent participated in MDE's building and aligned pre-K3 system for literacy, they implemented a mentor program for new teachers, they attended the technology conference and had support through SWWC, and the teachers and principals participated in district and self-selected professional development opportunities to enhance practice. And then, when we get to our whole district, looking at the curriculum best practices, like I said, the staff spent a lot of time last year on aligning the ELA standards, they, I, they dug in, I gave each step in the process that they did in this point, and I won't belabor that process right now. And then, instructional best practices, the staff development committee, you know, sends teachers to specific trainings, and then, in their PLCs, they're, they were to focus on instruction, lesson design, and common assessments. Our highly qualified teachers, as of August 2016, all teachers employed by the Pipestone Area School District are certified in teaching in their licensed areas, and all Title One Para Professionals must pass the Para Pro Assessment. And then, the goal of equitable access to excellent teachers, Pipestone Area Schools meets this requirement of access to excellent teachers, because it serves all students equitively at each grade level by delivering the Minnesota academic standards. This, upon your approval, gets sent by December 15th, or submitted by December 15th to MDE, which then they will run it through their rubric. The rubric is on their webpage, I did not run that rubric for you, but it takes you through each step. They do now provide feedback on how they feel you completed this based upon the rubric. Having been there during the review of this, it's quite the process, and people do read this. Some school districts think, eh, you did it, you completed it, but I think it's important for schools to really take the time. I know Mr. Anderson said, don't get too stressed about this. And, and so, I didn't go crazy on it, but I wanted to make sure it was an accurate reflection of what happened last year. So, I, go ahead.
And I think also, I think when you hear this report, the world's best workforce, this is what I appreciate the school board is giving administration some leeway to hire a curriculum director to have time to do these things, to get the resources we need. And I think you also hear in here the challenges that we have to help all of our students, and, you know, as I listen to all of these data, this is part that we didn't really explain much of in our second question on the operating levy, you know, I think our second question is all about this stuff. What do we do to help our kids be ready for school, how do we make sure? I mean, it isn't always about a curriculum and this, it's social workers, it's different types of people that can help our kids be ready and focus on what they need to do, so this is more, when you listen to this, you go, oh, and this is a big job, this takes a lot of work, and this is really what our second question was about in the operating levy, but we'll try again, how's that?
Alright, so, we need to approve this.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve the summary that Mel just so wonderfully summarized? Thank you, Mr. Eardman. Mister...
Botzinoi.
Phew, that stuff on the L's just sit nowhere. Thank you, any other discussion on this? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the summary of the 2016-17 World's Best Workforce Report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point three, approved master agreement with Pipestone Area Education Association.
If I can just maybe highlight some of the major points of what was covered, I provided you with a review sheet. Basically, there was a number of little language clarification items that we did. One thing that the Education Association asked for was to use facilities and resources like email and stuff, but there are some stipulations in the master agreement that they cannot do with that, but most of that is there. We updated some categorical things, put in appropriate dates where they needed to be, put in a process for converting semester hours to quarter hours, because our salary schedule is based on that, that does not retroactive, that's where we're at right now. There was some language changing married to family, when we talk about our health insurance, we have single plans and family plans, yet in the contract it talks about married plan, so they just made sense to kinda align the language of what we do, so there isn't anything that we did there. We added providing an activity pass for every teacher to go to school, events, not playoff games though, but they can go to events here. We did get the college in the schools language into the contract, where we will pay for up to eighteen credits, so that a teacher can teach a college in the school. We can actually ask, and if someone agrees, we will pay them for their course, their books, their mileage, and all the other pieces in there. In return, they do have to agree to teach that course as long as it's available for up to five years, we would hope they would stay here and teach it forever, but we need to get something like that because of where things are going, and those, I mean, you heard Mr. Strasser talk about how many kids we keep in school because of these courses, and I think they're great, the research shows that they do, kids who take these courses do better in college, they gain confidence, they understand what it means to take these courses. So it makes total sense, so why would anybody wanna mess with it? Ask the higher ed people. That's accreditation. Anyways, we also made a better definition of a long-term substitute and how we pay them. We did establish the formula for compensating our early childhood and preschool teachers. Basically, the contract used to say they will be paid according to the formula, and someone, one of the preschool teachers came in to me at the beginning of the year and said, what's my raise? I said, I don't, what are you asking me for? I said, you gotta have a master agreement and start reading, and it's like, oh, the formula, and nobody knew what the formula was, so there was no formula, so we did, we did that and got that, I think that'll be much better. As far as the salary and the financial settlement, year one, teachers were given a fourteen hundred dollar salary increase, and that was added to the base, and also a six hundred dollar increase in their health insurance. In year two, a thirteen hundred and fifty dollar salary increase, and that was also added to the base, and a six hundred dollar increase for health insurance. So for over two years, the final total package is just under seven percent increase. And I also provided to the board that you see kinda where area, where we're at in the area, and that, that budget, or that number, I think falls within our budgeted amounts for our budget, so we should be in okay shape, I don't think we had to go outside of that, we won't have to make any budgetary reductions in order to pay for this deal, so. And then, also, there were some changes in extracurricular things, we added a few coaches that aren't in the salary, or in the schedule, but we still have, we split out the FFA advisor and the summer hours per Mr. Baumgard, Boomgarden's request, and then, we updated some staff names on the severance deal, so. Overall, I think you heard the report, the negotiations committee feels good about this and recommends the full board approval. Any questions on the master agreement?
Can we get over there? Carla, you need some help?
Yeah.
You looking for, okay, got it? Okay. So you're saying, want me to stall here for a minute? Nope, okay. Alright, so I need a motion to approve the master contract, or agreement with the Pipestone Area Education Association. Thank you, Mr. Erdman.
Us ladies need to step it up over here. Get away from you men over there.
Thank you, Mr. Botz, and thank you, Mr. Oi, for the motion and the second, correct? Did you do that, or no?
That's fine, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All three of them.
I, I don't know, it was all in that direction. So we have our motion, we have our second, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Any other discussion? Thank you for that, all that clarification in there. Any other discussion? Any other questions for any of our negotiators? Thank you to you for all the hard work that you've done, all for you, appreciate it. Alright, all those in favor of approving the master agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, eight point four, two eighteen, two nineteen budget time.
Yep, here we go, I already, it's gonna start, so, basically, I have a budget planning timeline established. I asked the board to say, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, we'll start looking in December, I'll have the budget committee, we'll review the financial projections, and if there's any changes that need to be made to the fund balance, we can do that. And then, basically, January to February is where the admin team will work on our budget proposal. If you recall, well, last year, I also worked with the school board budget committee, we kinda kept updating, I would go between the admin team and that group to where we were at, what we were looking at, so they would understand. And then, by March, we would be looking to come with something to the board. I appreciate the community's support of question one on the operating levy, if that would not have passed. The reason for this timeline is, is because if you have to make reductions, and if you do have to go into your continuing contract staff by statute, you have to start letting them know by March, so that's why this timeline is as it is. This, we won't have to, so I'm glad, but you never know what's gonna happen between now and next March, so Jackie keeps telling me that we're one day away from somebody making a decision that messes everything up, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Holding her to, or us to anything with the budget can be a little bit sketchy sometimes, but overall, I think we should be looking at, you know, what do we wanna prioritize, and what do we wanna do, but this is what I recommend we use as a timeline for our budget, I don't know if it has to be approved.
No, well, according to them. Alright, so any questions for Mr. Anderson on that? Any other questions? No, good? Alright, let's move to eight point five, operating levy recount.
Alright, the recount, they found two more yes votes and two more no votes, so the final tally is seven thirteen to seven fourteen, so, our second question did not go through. I guess, I don't know if you guys have any, I've been, I guess, in the paper and on the radio, I've mentioned that, you know, I really appreciate, and our priority was the first question. The second question, I think, you know, again, tonight, when you start looking at all the little pieces, we have to be able to tell the story to the community as to why we needed that, and I, you know, we missed something. We didn't hear much, which, again, you know, if you hear things, we, I hope people can come in and talk to us and let us know, is it too much, do we just not understand? I think those who... I think those who asked questions felt like, okay, that makes sense and, you know, again, you know, how do we get out, you know, our world's best workforce report and where our kids are at and what we're trying to do and those dollars would be going to help those things, so, um, I guess that's kinda, and you as a board know, because you guys get to live a little bit more of this and not everybody out there does, so I don't know if you have any thoughts on how we continue to communicate or?
I've just told people, if you hear anything, please let us know because we can't, we can't help you understand unless we know what your concerns are, you know, I said, so anything, if it's just that you, you know, you didn't want your taxes to go up, then so be it, because we understand, you know, city, county, that all was going up. If it was, you know, if we're not doing something right as, as a, as a board, if we're making decisions that you don't agree with, let us know. You know, I just said, you need to be honest with us, otherwise we can't, we can't help you understand and help, you know, figure out why, why we're asking, you know, for this. So I've just said, just please, just be honest, you know, I'm not gonna hold it against anybody, just, if you hear anything from anybody, just, you know, let us know because that's only gonna help us as a board understand what our community is, is, you know, wanting from us to provide to the students.
I think you mentioned that in your article, we haven't heard, I haven't heard anything from the no group or why, why they went, I have heard tons of stuff, why they wanted to vote for it, but I haven't heard anything from the no. So it would be.
I appreciated the people who came and did ask questions, I think they got informed and, you know, there've been people who talked, but then there's others, I, you know, you just, that's the, when it's this close and you're just going, what, half our community didn't? What was the, you know, what was the why? I mean, and it was seventy three percent approval of the first question to renewal, that is, uh, fantastic. That's just really tremendous support, uh, the community saying that we're, we're on the right page. Then just how to, you know, how do you have three hundred people do it about faith on the second question? What did we need to do there, right, you know? So I think that's where I would just like to continue to hear what it is, um, you know? I, I heard from some, you know, some people thought that maybe it was too much. Okay, you know, right? But you don't hear that from a lot of people, so I don't know.
All right.
I heard some that some people thought we didn't use the, we shouldn't have did the tennis courts with the maintenance fund. I've heard that, that was the one I've heard.
Right.
And then I've heard the city taxes.
And I can understand the taxes when, you know, the maintenance piece, that, that has nothing to do with the second question. I mean, that's how we manage and you guys are in the fund and you know what we're doing there. That's not a mismanagement of those funds, that's, you know? But I can understand where people may be fake.
That's what they, that's what I've, you know, that I've heard from a couple of.
And so then I just go, well, that, okay, but that's again, being informed, understanding, asking questions, coming up and saying, why are you using maintenance dollars to build tennis courts?
Right.
You know, I had one person ask that and I thought we had a great conversation, but if more people think that, you know, that they, are they getting informed as to the decisions and how you guys have to do that?
Right.
LTFM dollars, where, where all that comes from and, you know?
Okay, any other questions on the operating levy recount? All right, eight point six, the election judge pay.
Um, election judges, we currently pay them ten dollars an hour, twelve dollars an hour to the.
Head judge.
Head judge, uh, that was said about ten years ago, um, in two thousand seven. We don't have a lot of elections, if we do them with the general elections, the county just sends us a bill and we pay. But you have had a couple of elections we've had to run, so we pay and I guess the question was, you wanna up it or leave it as is?
I just questioned it because minimum wage goes to nine seventy-five January first. And we're checking with, the city pays minimum wage at an election for their election judges and every township is different, so.
So when we get the bill from the county, how much are we charged?
I don't know, I'll have supplies, you know, that I do, they'll charge us.
Not for this one, but for other elections, if we have to contribute for election costs.
Some townships are charging, they pay twenty dollars an hour or whatever, that bill comes back.
It varies, you know, um, because they do the advertising for us, you know, that's gonna fluctuate every year. I, I honestly couldn't tell you right off the top of my head, not a, it's a certain percentage of what, you know? I suppose they build the city some, they build, you know, us some.
Yeah, it's a percentage.
Did, did we have a tough time getting election judges?
Did I have a tough time? No, and actually, I mean, I have some, uh, I send something with two where they can volunteer their time. And I, I did have some that volunteered their time.
I know, it's weird to me.
I, I guess I'm okay with this. Change it or not, so.
Crazy. I don't know.
I don't know, I mean, I, I mean, if the city pays minimum, I guess, I don't, I mean, we seem to be right in line, I mean, unless we feel that because this was a special one, we change it for this one, I don't know, I mean, if we're not in line with what other communities are doing, then I say, let's change, but.
I didn't check out the communities, I just called the city office or I guess I emailed them. And then she said they pay minimum, but every township is different because they may have three voters, so they may have to pay somebody twenty dollars, not hard to have them sit there all day for three voters. You know, but I just thought we'd throw it out, I just thought we should throw it out there.
Right.
Well, it's something we could have you guys check into more and then address it at our organizational meeting.
But don't we need to pay these guys now?
Right.
So we kinda have to set something. I mean, if we're just gonna, right, keep what we have and then we can look at that, yeah, 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 for sure.
That thing going forward is what you need to address, I mean, we're at already at a point that that's done. I think it's something that you need to address going forward.
Sure. I thought you were one to delay making the decision on what we were gonna pay them till then, okay? But we can just, yeah, totally fine, yep. So what do you want, a motion? Do you need a motion?
No, I'm only if we were changing.
Okay, okay.
All right, so now I need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman and thank you, Mrs. Wees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned.